Right, so I can just help guide you through this Donovan. So if you just want to open the meeting, it's seven oh two.
And then. It's seven oh two. Yep. We call the meeting to order. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall at twenty room two eighteen one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes, yep.
Great.
Yes.
At www.torringtonct.org/zoom. You can join the Zoom meeting. Uh, the phone number for that meeting for that Zoom connection is that one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Meeting ID number seven nine five nine five zero seven zero three five pass code nine oh seven one four eight. In attendance tonight are, who do we have?
Uh, Jim and and Donna in the room. And Tom seated, Thomas seated and and Donovan.
And myself. Very good. Thank you, Jeremy. Um. Next up on the agenda, number three minutes for approval. September twenty, the September twenty fifth twenty twenty four meeting minutes. I have a motion.
I abstain.
If I can make a motion to approve the minutes.
I also abstain.
All right, so we'll have to, we don't have enough, so we'll have to just table those for the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll carry over the approval for the for the minutes of the September twenty fifth meeting to the next meeting. Number four on the agenda.
Oh, sorry, just before we move on, I had a request from the applicant for six B ten fifty eight Litchfield Street to move them last on the agenda. Um, if that's okay, we'll just have to have a motion for that.
And I have a motion to move the six B applicant. Application one five three four to the end of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
He's at a, uh, he is at another meeting in Litchfield, so he wants to hold off as long as possible so he can get to ours.
Thanks, Jeremy. Um. Public hearings none. Number five, old business, none. Number six, new business. We will take six A site plan application number one five three three. Location eighty eight dash ninety two Brightwood Avenue Assessor's Map one twenty five block zero zero four lot zero zero nine. Applicant Joseph Lucia. Proposal new twelve hundred square feet storage building for equipment and vehicle storage. Uh, Jeremy, do we look now for a memo or?
Uh, yep, that you should have gotten that one with your packets, with your mail packets. Um, the applicant's in the in the room too.
Okay. Do you want me to read this?
Um, I'll, I'll read it in when it's when it's time. Um, maybe we should just have the applicant chat with us for a second.
Could we have the applicant approach, please?
Uh, come on up, Joe. Just give him, give him a quick, just a quick, uh, summary, what you're looking to do. So it would help if I, uh, brought those, let me bring your plan up. That would probably help play a bit.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Lucia. Am I pronouncing your last name correctly?
Yeah, you can just call me Joe. That's fine.
Joe, thank you for being here and we appreciate it.
Yeah, me too.
We'll give Jeremy a chance to put the maps up.
Yep.
Yep. Mm hmm.
I'm yelling over there, nobody can hear me.
We can hear you.
So what, what is it, Joe, that you're that you're planning on doing?
Putting up a thirty by forty garage right there, or building, storage.
The one that's labeled proposed building on there?
Yep.
He was, uh, if he, I don't, he was in a couple of years ago for that one that says existing building. Um, this is very similar building, right, Joe? It's.
Yeah, it's sure though. It's not as, it's not as tall.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
Um, I took, I took off my, I got rid of my tent that was there.
Yeah.
The ice door in that Conex box that was there, that's gone. Just making it look nice for the new owner.
Yep. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's fairly straightforward unless somebody else has any, some, anybody's got any questions for them. We just have, we have standard setbacks of ten feet to the, to the, the roadside property line. There's actually no requirement for the, the side property because that next door property is also local business.
Okay, and the survey found the iron pins, you know, you're within the property bounds.
Yeah, so one of the requirement, one of the requirements which Joe and I talked about is a, we'll have to get a foundation as built because it's right on it. The ten foot setback is exactly what's required, so we'll have to verify that when the, when the slabs poured.
It's probably going to be a few inches.
Yeah.
Or.
Right, that's, that's what I would say anyway, just to be safe.
Yeah, I know. I know. I just want to, I don't want to hide anything.
I want you to know. And I don't want you to have any problems once you, when you're done pouring either, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's up to Brian Sufi, so if he's messing it up.
It's on him.
And so, Joe, on the map where it says existing building, you did a, so you did a similar construction at, at, in that quarter of the property a couple of years ago?
Yes.
How did that turn out?
Beautiful. I go in there and just sit and meditate sometimes. It's so nice.
Is Zen Garden in there?
Very nice. It's no problems, everything went according to plan.
Everything went well. There was always problems, but no, everything now is fine.
Yeah. Nice, all right.
And this building is. This only has, um, ten foot, ten foot doors in it, so the height of the walls are only twelve feet. The other one is fourteen feet high. So it's a lot shorter.
Is it a masonry building?
No, it's a, it's a new core, new core steel building.
Okay.
So and you, I think the way you described it is you got, you have some tow trucks and some equipment, maybe.
Yeah, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put two of my flatbeds inside.
Okay, okay, yep.
That's why it's gotta be forty feet long because the flatbeds are like thirty three or thirty four and I don't want to.
Okay.
Keep them out of the weather. They're brand new, so. Hate the idea of being outside.
Joe, where, where do you keep those now, those?
Um, there was a, there was a Shelter Logic tent there that I kept one in. Um, one goes in, one goes in my main garage and the other two are in the other building. But I have a, uh, fifth one. That, um, stays outside, so I'm gonna put two in this new building and only one in the garage and nothing will be outside.
Okay. Nice. That's an improvement, right?
I mean, it's, it's, you know, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars a piece, so just staying outside in the weather really just, I have a mental problem with that.
Yeah.
So like, do you want me to read my memo in?
Yeah, do any other commissioners have any questions?
Nope, good.
Nope, familiar with it.
Everybody's good.
Okay.
Um, thanks, Jeremy, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so Joe, Joe Lucia, DBA Torrington Four Wheel and Offroad has filed site plan application number fifteen thirty three for construction of a new twelve hundred square foot storage building at his existing automotive repair facility at ninety two Brightwood Avenue. Assessors map one twenty five block zero zero four lot zero zero nine. The property is owned by Joseph Lucia is twenty one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet in area and is located in the LB local business zone. The proposed accessory building use is a permitted use in the LB zone per section five point two point three of the zoning regulations. The primary property use is as an automotive repair, as an automotive repair facility remains unchanged. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four. A review of past applications on this property show that site plan number thirteen ninety five was approved for this property in February twenty twenty two to add a twelve hundred square foot storage building along Brightwood Avenue. Automotive repair location approval was granted in nineteen sixty four and has been in continuous operation under various ownership since. Plans submitted are titled zoning location survey prepared for Joseph Lucia, DBA Torrington Four Wheel and Offroad. Ninety two Brightwood Avenue, Torrington, Connecticut by David J. Little, licensed land surveyor, Torrington, Connecticut. Revised to August tenth, twenty twenty four, one sheet. The building as proposed meets the required zoning setbacks. The accessory building will be located in the northeast corner of the property adjacent to East Elm Street, Connecticut Route four. It will provide accessory storage for the automotive shop to house tow trucks and equipment. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, the building location may require discontinuance of the current driveway entrance and curb cut off of East Elm Street, subject to DOT comment. Approval and restoration of the curbing or sidewalk may be required by DOT or City of Torrington Public Works as a condition of this approval. Two, per plan notes, existing parking on the property will remain undisturbed. Twelve parking spaces are required on the property, three per garage bay plus one per two thousand square feet of storage building square footage. Including parking inside the storage buildings, there are eleven parking spaces on the property. One additional space will be required to be located on the final plans. Three, the handicap parking space on the site plan is required to be marked as a van accessible parking space. Sixteen feet in width with eight feet in width of cross hatching. The plan should be updated to reflect the proper dimensions and striping. The handicap space should be required to be properly marked and signed on the property prior to zoning permits being issued for the building construction. Four, existing parking in the front yard setback is pre-existing non-conforming along East Elm Street. Five, due to proximity to the required property setbacks, a foundation as built is required after the foundation slab has been installed before constructing the building. Other staff comments, economic development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director responded in support of this project on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject property. That would require wetlands review for this proposal. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, this application does not require submission of a landscaping plan. Lighting, new and existing lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the zoning regulations, which requires full cutoff lighting with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage must conform to section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Other vehicles are parked in the city right of way within the ten foot front yard buffer. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for review. Torrington Area Health District, TAHD, offered no comments on the plans. Engineering, Paul Kunzen, City Engineer, submitted the following comments on September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. It is recommended that existing curb cut on East Elm be abandoned. Please confirm with DOT. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus completed his review on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four and stated that he has no comments on this application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Pasetta completed his review of the project on October first, twenty twenty four and offered no comments. WPCA Edward Tausy, WPCA Administrator, completed his application review on September third, twenty twenty four and stated that no WPCA permitting is required. Water, James Myers of the Torrington Water Company, completed his review on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four and offered no comments on the application. Connecticut DOT, Rob Fernandez, Transportation District Services Agent Two with Connecticut DOT, submitted the following comments on September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Given the structure is temporary, meaning can be easily removed or dismantled and the current access onto Route four, East Elm meets the regulations regarding distance to intersecting road. We do not object to leaving the approved access in place. I did meet with Mr. Lucia to review the scope of work. No work is planned within the right of way at this time. We discussed the vehicles would need to be moved back as some appear to be encroaching. He, he agreed. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette offered the following comments for this application. Building Department permits must be obtained for all work performed under Connecticut State Building Code. Permit applications must be accompanied by complete sets of IBC, section one oh seven construction documents prepared by a registered design professional as applicable. Thank you. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve site plan number one five three three to construct a new twelve hundred foot square foot storage building to existing automotive repair facility in accordance with submitted plans with the following conditions. One, final plan shall be updated to show one additional parking space on the property to show a compliant number of twelve parking spaces on the property. Two, final plan shall show the proper dimensions and striping of the van accessible handicap parking space on the property. The space shall be properly striped, marked and signage installed prior to the issuance of approval for building construction. Three, per October first, twenty twenty four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette. The applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Four, per comments of Rob Fernandez of Connecticut DOT. Vehicle parking and storage shall be located out of the state road right, right of way and onto private property. Five, a zoning permit shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing work on the property. Six, a foundation as built shall be required to verify property setback compliance after the foundation slab is in place and prior to building construction. Seven, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full final approved plan, including the engineer or surveyor stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the final plan sheet for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer, engineer slash surveyor seal and live ink stamp. Mylar sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after signature of the chairman and prior to approval of zoning permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add at this time?
No, sir.
All right, do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions?
Nope.
Nope.
All set.
We're all good. I, I, I did have, I did have one question, uh, Joe, about the, um, quickly about the, uh, the parking of, of certain uh, vehicles that needed to be moved back. Is that, is that something that, that?
Yeah, no, that's my fault.
Is that something eas- easily correctable?
Yeah, I just, well, there, there, my cars for sale in the front line are just pushed a little far forward.
Okay.
Back them up. But my building is sitting there, ready to go up.
The, uh.
I gotta.
Oh, sorry.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll have it all straightened out. It, it's, it was not going to take a long time. I just, I just gotta move back like two feet. That's it.
Yeah, so the, so I was just gonna add that, um, the property line is actually, the curb is in front of it. So there's, there's, um, no kind of visual divide there where that, where that, um, actual property line is. The part, the parking is, is marked on the, on the property, so.
Yeah, just right now, it's, everything's just kind of thrown in there. I, like, the building came in like six different loads, so it's stacked everywhere. I just want to.
Oh, oh, okay, so you had to move them, you had to move them up to get them out of the way of all the material, put this thing up.
Just, yeah, because the building is, it's a steel building. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful, it's nicer than my other one, actually.
Okay.
It's a real steel building. It bolts to the, to the ground.
I understand now. I appreciate, I appreciate.
It came in, it came in a big, huge tractor trailer and I just, I didn't, I, I was overwhelmed. I just dumped it anywhere I could find just to get it out of the way.
Yeah. Understood.
It'll, it'll all be straightened out once I get, I guess, if we get approved or whatever. And this building goes up, then I, then my parking lot's gonna be open again and I could move all my cars around. I'm, I'm like two feet over the, over the, in the states right away, I guess.
So it's part of the process of getting this project done. Understood.
Yep.
Makes sense. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it. Um, so Jeremy, do I, do I, uh, ask for a motion to approve at this point?
Yep, Donna's got a motion to read in.
And she, she, she reads it in first and then I ask for a motion to.
Yeah, then, then you ask for a second when she, when she's done reading it in. And then, uh, if there's any other discussion after the, after the second, you, you can do that, you do that then.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Donna, would you like to read them, read the, read it into the record? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan fifteen thirty three applicant Joseph Lucia, location eighty eight to ninety two Brightwood Avenue Assessor Map one twenty five block zero zero four lot zero zero nine. Proposal new twelve hundred square foot storage building for equipment and vehicle storage with the following conditions and recommendations. One, final plan shall be updated to show one additional parking space on the property to show a compliant number of twelve spaces on the property. Two, final plan shall show the proper dimensions and striping of the van accessible handicap parking space on the property. The space shall be properly, properly striped, marked and signage installed prior to issuance of approval for building construction. Three, per October first, twenty twenty four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette. The applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Four, per comments of Rob Fernandez of CT DOT, vehicle parking and storage shall be located out of the state road right of way and onto private property. Five, a zoning permit shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing work on the property. Six, a foundation as built hall be quite, hall be required to verify property setback compliance after the foundation slab is in place and prior to building construction.
Sorry, that was, that was supposed to say shall.
Okay. Shall be required. Okay. All right. Uh, seven, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan, including the engineer or surveyor stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the final plan sheet for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission and engineer slash survey or sig- seal and live ink stamp. Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction or site work.
Thanks, Donna. Appreciate it. Do any commissioners have any comments?
Uh, wait, wait a second first and then, and then.
Oh, all right. Can I get a second to that motion, please?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Do any commissioners have any final thoughts or questions for Mr.?
Good luck, Joe.
Joe Lucia. That's a good comment.
Yeah, so then you just, uh, do the all in favor.
Um, all, if all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. That's it.
Appreciate.
On those couple of things that were on there. What's up?
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you to follow up, uh, tomorrow or.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just follow up with you.
I'm, I'm all right though.
Um, yeah, it's a couple, there's just a couple of things that were conditional that mark in the handicap space and stuff, but I'll talk to you about it. I, I don't know. I have no idea. It's, it probably just was a lack of site inspections.
Why don't we have that again?
Yeah. Sorry.
Up for discussion.
I'll chat with you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
So, um, anytime in the afternoon.
I see Ken, I see Ken is on. Do we want to take it in order?
Uh, so we already, we already swapped the agenda, so we'll be to him in like, you know, three minutes probably.
Okay, all right, so site application number fifteen thirty five, location one sixty Church Street. Assessors map one, one, seven block zero zero six lot zero zero seven. And one sixty eight Church Street Assessor's map one, one, eight block zero zero two lot zero zero nine applicant City of Torrington. Engineering Public Works, the proposals of site development of parkland parking lot and multi-use trail. And we have, do we have Paul?
So, so that, that is the, that is the city's application for the, for the area around Christmas Village. Um, they have asked that we table the application until, until, um, November's meeting. They, they just have some, a couple of things they have to straighten out and, and, and you're kind of behind the scenes here with at City Hall before, before they present, so they, they weren't quite ready to present for us tonight.
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate that. All in fa- all those in favor of tabling site plan application number one five three five, one sixty, one sixty eight Church Street applicant. City of Torrington, um, or could I have a motion? Do I need?
Motion, yes.
Could I have a motion to table site plan application one five three five, location one sixteen, one sixty eight Church Street applicant City of Torrington Engineering Public Works proposal for site development, parkland parking lot and multi-use trail?
Donna just made the, Donna made the motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Donna. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So tabled. Next up, we okay, Jeremy, so far?
Yep, yeah, we're okay. Uh, so I, I mean, if I, what I can, I mean, we're, we're going ahead to seven A, right, to the, to the zoning, zoning and blight enforcement update.
Oh, we want to do that and then go back to?
Yeah, I, you know, I just, what I, what I'll say is I can probably give you a very quick summary on that. Um, everybody should have the latest report. Um, you know, we're work, we're trying to work out our issues with the, with the recycling yard for, um, for mountaintop and I'm sure people have noticed going up and down East Main Street, progress is, is being made at the, at the, uh, ten fifty East Main where the, where the, um, coffee truck is.
Yeah, batchy brew. I saw the sidewalk.
Moving slowly but surely, yeah, and he's get, he's, he's paved that piece of the parking lot that he has to put the, um,
handicap spot.
Put the, the handicap parking space in still, um, but at least it's paved and we'll follow up with the next piece of it, but it's moving in the right direction anyway.
Finally.
Yeah. So the, uh, this, those were the only two, two updates I really had outside of just, unless anybody had any questions for me.
Nope, I'm good.
Right.
Everybody okay? Any, any, any other questions on anything relating to blight or, um, zoning enforcement? Hearing none. We'll move on. Are we okay to go to six B now?
We are, yes. So it's, that's the last item on the agenda.
All right.
Ken was here quicker than, than we thought.
Yeah.
Quicker than I thought. New business, six B. I can still gum up the works, folks, so don't get too excited. So we got a, a six B site plan application number one five three four, location ten fifty eight Litchfield Street Assessor's map. One zero two block zero zero six lot zero one two. The applicant is Ken. Rick, uh, Rick Associates for Keystone Place. Proposal is conversion of two temporary construction parking areas into permanent parking lots. Um. We have, I believe, Ken with us now.
Ken, are you gonna, are you gonna share?
Yes, I'd like to.
Oh, okay, good.
Good evening, Ken.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, sir.
Oh, that's, that's good. That's, I'm used to having to run back and forth and change sheets.
Well, there you go. Um, I'm up. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Perfect. Um. So for the record, Kenneth Rika, professional engineer and licensed land surveyor, um, working with the Keystone folks, people, um, right now they are currently constructing two additions to their structure. And because of the tightness of the site, uh, they've had to incorporate two temporary parking spaces. Um, one is for construction material and that is on the backside of the building, which you really can't see. So I've, I've kind of circled the two areas in red uh, to show you what we're talking about. So there's seven parking spaces now constructed or an area that that is roughly seven parking spaces out and back for construction and that's blocked off from the residents. And most of the construction's taking place on what's considered the back of the building, which is kind of what you see as you drive in. Uh, and then because they are adding on to each one of the two wings on either side of the building, they've had to shut down the underground parking garage. And so they needed a place for the residents who normally park in the garage to keep their cars. So we've created a temporary. A temporary parking spot on the south side of the site, which is in the lawn area just off the circular turnaround. Uh, and that's graded the same as what we're showing now. Um, and and they are currently using that for the their um. Uh. Um, drawn a mental blank. Um.
Parking garage?
They're ambulatory citizens. They're um, they're not assisted living. Uh, they're they're self sustaining. There it's it's basically an apartment, so. Um, so those people can come and go and they they keep their cars over here and they have a little shuttle golf cart that will will drive them down. And since these areas have been disturbed and they've been constructed. To meet parking regulations for all for all that's worth, and they're currently gravel. Um, but they they meet all of the grading and all of the city requirement for parking. Uh, the ownership thought it would be a good idea. To just leave those in place and pave pave the the front one. Uh, and keep that as an overflow parking space after the construction is done. That will give a little bit more parking for special event nights um or days, I should say, because the special events there take place during the day. Um, on holidays, they generally offer a buffet. Uh, for families to families of the residents to come and share with with um the people that live there. Uh, so a lot of times you'll see parking along the the accessways and even sometimes on the access road. So having. Uh, a parking spot which we're proposing for twenty spaces out in front. Would be ideal just to have a place for the congested parking on those Saturdays or Sundays or Mondays. When there's a holiday and they're running a special event for for the the residents. Uh, so we've prepared a a site plan that that meets um all of the zoning regulations for the parking spots. This lot has twenty spaces. It will drain into the current drainage system. Uh, when we constructed the building, the first phase. We had an overabundance of stormwater management from a prior application for a much bigger building. And we left it that way on purpose uh for just type this type of event. So we still have plenty of stormwater capacity to go ahead and do an additional paved parking area. Of we're we're landscaping it. Um, what I'm showing to you in green is existing landscaped vegetation. There's. There's rows of trees that sh- shave this area now, and then there's a lot of low growing shrubs. And we will be planting shrubs on the western side as well. Uh, which will which all have a a mature height of that roughly to at least the nose of a car or maybe even a little taller. To kind of shield the view of the cars that are in this parking area. And we've added two maple trees uh to fortify the the tree stand and kind of wrap the trees around as well. Uh, so we do have that, and we've also prepared a lighting plan. Uh, and lighting plan is actually shown here with with the isometrics on here. That we do not have any lighting that goes o- over the property lines onto adjacent properties or into the right of way. Uh, all of the lighting is full cutoff dark sky compliant, so will only be lighting down into this parking lot. Um, in the evening, and we've done the minimum amount of lighting here just to keep it low key. Um, it it really, once the the place is operational, most of the residents. Uh, but the independent living residents will not be using this lot. Some may. Uh, but there won't be much cause for it, so we've kept the lighting as low key as possible with the least amount of lumens, just enough to get people. In the dark when necessary into the building. Uh, so that that's that one is the primary one that you would see as you pass by, and we've tried to screen it as well as possible. Without putting up barriers to the visualization, just a kind of a natural screen and and it'll fit in quite nicely. On the backside. Which this parking space would be reserved for staff only. Uh, there is currently a grass paver at accessway that wraps around to the backside. Uh, which is it's it's a concrete paver that has cells in it that you fill with topsoil and then grass grows because it's very rarely used. It's. It's more of an emergency accessway. And we're pro- proposing to extend the grass pavers for the parking lot as well, so it'll create a. And a pervious surface for this area as well. Uh, we do have a single light fixture back here. Uh, that we show the isometrics. We've tried to keep the lighting low key back there as well. Uh, the Heritage Land Preservation Trust has land just to the north of us, and you can see the the lighting goes nowhere near the property line in between the two. And the lighting does light up to the ground, but it's not going to be glaring into the windows of the building. Um, this is the memory care. Unit on the first floor down below, so we were sensitive to that fact that we don't want a lot of light shining in the windows. Um, being all pervious surface, we did not provide any stormwater drainage or need to for this area out back. Um, uh, then that's that's our proposal. We're hoping that you would uh to give us uh an approval tonight. So that they can schedule to get this parking lot paved before winter. So that it'll make the maintenance of the paving a lot better than plowing up all of the gravel that's there now uh during the winter storms.
Ken, Ken, um, how how long has has the space has that have the the twenty spaces? The temporary parking, how long has that been in in use?
They've been in use now for three or four weeks.
Oh, the the so the temporary spaces are only about a month old.
Yes, they they the they started construction on this area. Uh, but didn't need to access it because they still had access to the parking garage. Uh, and so there's a there's a double stage retaining wall on the west side. And a lot of the bulk of the construction that took place took place all kind of in front of the assisted living and the parking area below. And it kept an accessway for the rent for the residents to come in and out of the parking garage. But they've since in the last couple of weeks, we um finished off most of the wallwork. And had to get going on the foundation. So the foundations here are part poured now, and there's no access to the underground garage, but that's it's only been a month or so.
Okay, and in that month, it it does it seem like it's worked out? The way it was planned, it's accessible. People have used it for a month?
Yes, the the um. The the people who have cars. Have been forced out of here, so the the back parking lot is full and and this is close to full now. Um, they the actually Keystone is is actually going back. And looking to do a a third temporary area down in the bottom of the site um. During the construction phase, they do not wish to convert that area, so they will. Once once the construction is finished. They will pull the gravel out for the parking down below here and um and reseed and turn this area down at towards the entrance back into lawn. And then just leave the two up top, but it's working. It's working quite well. Uh, they do have a little golf cart shuttle. It moves the people in and out. Um, it's fairly congested. It's a small. It's a small site to begin with, and because of the topography with the walls behind. And the walls in front is it's there's limited mobility and limited places to put things, so. Um, they they're working with what they have.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Do any other uh any other questions from any commissioners at this time?
No, not for me.
Before we read. Uh, the memo into the record. Jeremy, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I just have my just have the memo to read in if we're ready.
Okay, um, hearing no other questions or comments. Uh, could would is is Donna reading that or you?
I I am. Yeah, I'm first. Yeah, my full memo first.
Go ahead, Jeremy. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ken Rika, Rick Associates has filed site plan application number fifteen thirty-four. On behalf of Keystone Place at Newberry Brook LLC. For property at ten fifty-eight Litchfield Street, tax assessor map one oh two, block zero zero six, lot zero one two. To revise previously approved site plan number fourteen eighteen and number fourteen fifty-five. To convert two temporary construction parking lots into permanent parking lots. One parking lot is located in the northern part of the property and the second near the entry drive in the southeastern corner of the property. The property is owned by Keystone Place at Newberry Brook LLC, is sixteen point seven two acres in area. And is located in an R fifteen residential zone. The current use of the property is a congregate care facility. And is a conforming use by special exception and site plan approval under zoning regulations, section three point one. Table of permitted uses subsection one point five zero. A previous special exception and site plan approval under application number nine ninety-one was approved on January twenty-six, twenty-eleven. And a new site plan number fourteen eighteen, or in addition to the facility, was approved on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. A site plan modification approval under site plan number fourteen fifty-five was approved in June twenty twenty-three. To modify an access road and retaining wall. No changes in use are proposed as part of this application. The review of this project is guided by the site plan regulations of section eight point four. And the parking regulations of section five point one three of the regulations. Plans submitted are titled Keystone Place at Newberry Brook. Site plan parking modification, ten fifty-eight Litchfield Street, Torrington, Connecticut by Rick Associates LLC, Litchfield, Connecticut. Dated August second, twenty twenty-four, five sheets. Staff has met previously with the property owner's engineer to discuss the project prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, there is a six point two eight acre conservation easement on this property. Per section one point five point five of the zoning regulations. The holder of this easement shall submit a letter verifying that the application is in compliance with the easement. The applicant has contacted the easement holder, Herded Land Heritage Land Preservation Trust. And a response was received by email on October ninth, twenty twenty-four. From Heritage Land Preservation Trust that there is no conflict with the easement. Two, per parking table located on sheet C one of the plan set. The parking requirements for the property, including previously approved additions, are compliant with the minimum parking requirements. Eighty-four spaces required, one hundred and fourteen spaces provided. Minimum handicapped accessible spaces are provided and all parking property line setbacks are compliant. Other staff comments, economic development, William Wallach, economic development director, did not submit comments for this project. Assistant city planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, assistant city planner, submitted the following comments on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses in the vicinity of the proposed activity that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, proposed landscaping meets minimum requirements in section five point one one. Lighting, photometric plan shows compliance with section five point one seven of the zoning regulations. Signage, no signage was included in this approval. All future signage must conform to section five point one five of the zoning regulations. In the past, I have noticed a sandwich board signed by the road, which is prohibited in the zone by section five point one five. Conservation, this property has a con- property has a conservation easement held by Heritage Land Preservation Trust. And while permission was asked, there is no documentation of a response. According to my review, the conservation easement does not restrict the portion of the property where activities are proposed. The following additional comment was submitted on October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Conservation, response was received from the land trust confirming there is no conflict with the easement. Engineering, Paul Kunzen, city engineer, completed his review on Oc- on October third, twenty twenty-four. And offered no comments on this application. This application was not referred to the Architecture Review Committee, the Torrington Area Health District, Police Traffic Division, Fire Marshal. Water Pollution Control Authority, Building Department, or Torrington Water Company for review due to the nature of the project. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve site plan fifteen thirty-four to convert to temporary construction parking lots. Into permanent parking lots at the existed existing congregate care facility known as Keystone Place at ten fifty-eight Litchfield Street. With the following conditions. One, the applicant shall follow the comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, assistant planner. Outlined in his October eighth, twenty twenty-four review comments regarding any future land changes to landscaping, lighting, lighting and signage. Two, all terms and conditions of the previous site plan approvals, number fourteen eighteen and fourteen fifty-five shall remain in effect for this approval. Three, site bonding and zoning permits on file for current construction activities on the property. Shall be modified to cover and include the parking lot conversion activities. Four, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. Two copies of the A, two copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet, C one, in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheets shall sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman. And prior to approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, Ken, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
I think I've covered it all.
Thanks, Ken. Appreciate it. Appreciate you calling ahead and and letting us know that you that you might be a little late to it. Much appreciated. Do any do any commissioners or uh any have any comments or questions at this time before we entertain a motion?
All good.
Hearing none. Um, Donna, do you have a motion that you could uh uh put forward, please?
Like to make a motion to approve site plan fifteen thirty-four applicant Ken Rika, Rick Associates on behalf of Keystone Place at Newberry Brook. Location ten fifty-eight Litchfield Street, assessor map one zero two, block zero zero six, lot lot zero one two. Proposal conversion of two temporary construction parking lots into permanent parking lots with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, assistant planner, outlined in his October eighth, twenty twenty-four review comments regarding any future changes to landscaping, lighting and signage. Two, all terms and conditions of the previous site plan approvals, number fourteen eighteen and number. Fourteen fifty-five shall remain in effect for this approval. Three, site bonding and zoning permits on file for current construction activities on the property shall be modified to cover and include the parking lot conversion activities. Four, in accordance with the section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning. To the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet, C one, in accordance with the section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission. An engineer's seal and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant. With the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Second.
Thank you, Donna. We have a second from who who seconded?
Um.
Tom, thank you very much for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ken. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
Night.
Uh, moving on, we've already heard from the zoning and uh and blight violation update.
Yeah, we already did that.
One last thing, Jeremy, do we do we need to go on the record for in order to um. Uh. To address uh um. Uh, a- any commissioners that are um. Is it temporary to permanent or how is that?
I'm 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 sorry.
Like in order to have a quorum and and um do we are there any is it called a ta- are some commissioners temporary?
Oh, 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 Tom was seated as an alternate. Yeah.
Did it? So he's and that's.
Yeah, so at least maybe you didn't mention it, but I but I did mention it at the beginning that Tom was a seat that Tom was seated. So we only have we only need three members for quorum, but we have four anyway, so. So we only have, we only need three members for forum, but we have four anyway, so.
Oh, okay, great. Oh, yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Is there anything else?
It's on the, it's on the record in the recording anyway, so.
Good. Is there anything else we need to do?
Nope, adjournment.
Number eight, uh, moving on to adjournment, although, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven fifty two. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy, appreciate it.
Yep.